Good afternoon.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Keep it looking to a point.
We're meeting the whole meeting, March sixth, five P. M. We're going to go over the budget again as well. I'm going to turn it over, the floor, over to Councilperson Frank Miola, who was a past Finance Chairman of the Committee of the Whole, no, of the Finance Committee. And, um, fire away, Frank. Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilman DeBrengo. Today is March sixth at five P. M. Monday, we are going over the budget for engineering, D. P. W., parks, sewer, paving, U. E. D., U. R. A., Section Eight, codes, golf, and controller. Our Budget Director, Heather Moat, what department would you like to start with?
I'd like to start on page twenty, Engineering, since we're all kind of tied in for the most part with Engineering and D. P. W.
Council, please turn to page twenty.
As Engineering, so really, the only thing that's changed here is under the salary and wages lines. So, um, Mike will kind of share a little more information on that, too. Um, both Stephanie, Stephanie works in sewers, but also works within the Engineering Department, and so does Austin. Austin has primarily, over the past couple of years, worked on paving. Because of the amount of work within ARPA, he's going to be taking on additional duties. It's been the Engineering Department that has really stepped up as, as it relates to the implementation of the ARPA funds this past two years. Um, and so, um, the mayor has proposed changing their, their classifications up slightly, not a huge amount. I think it's like eight or ten thousand dollars requisite with their skill set and, and what they've been doing for Engineering Department. Um, other than that, as it relates to engineering, we could go through, if you want, to the org chart, but, um, Mike is reducing the interns and adding a full-time position.
Two.
Two full-time positions. Um, these were interns, um, I believe, past two years or just this year?
Um, past two years.
Past two years, working in our paving program. It's, and there again, the need, the need has just been exemplified by, by implementation of ARPA. Um, and, um, we're excited to be able to get them. Um, we've, we've had a real tough time trying to attract talent. Austin's been working, just getting in there with SUNY and trying to, to find talent to come with us. Um, so I don't know if you have any particular questions of Mike and his team as it relates to the Engineering Cost Center per se, or paving, um, they really touch so many departments.
Councilmembers, any questions for paving and engineering? Okay, let's go to the next one, Budget Director.
Page twenty-one, continuing on its D. P. W. administration. Um, here again, not much of a change in anything, just the required salary increases. Um, this is where we see Dave Short and his staff, internal staff, and not much of a change there. Um, on page twenty-two is City Hall Maintenance. Um, the, the biggest change here is that, um, we've historically funded three maintenance positions and only filled two of them. The mayor is constantly looking for qualified maintenance people for the building. He's been unable to find them. So as part of cost reductions this year, I did defund one position that was funded, previously funded, and not filled. Um, the, the only other thing I kind of want to make a note of.
So that position went off, the maintenance, that's why it decreased?
Yeah.
We're on page twenty-two.
One oh-two. Yeah, one oh-two.
Look at the bottom, City Hall Maintenance.
Yeah. Um, the, the only other thing I want to note, I haven't gotten any questions on, and, and it may be simply that you recall, we've got lots of kind of weird things happening with our electrical service here. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, we installed, um, the street lighting. And when we did so, the Engineering Department worked with outside consultants, and they rearranged the billings for, for, for our electrical service because we have solar panels up north. And so you're seeing numbers go up and down in kind of erratic ways. It should fix itself this next year, but you'll see ups and downs, even when we go to do budget transfers. You're seeing things come out and things be added in. And all it is, it's not that we're using any less service or using any more service, it's just how they were classified.
Plus, it was hard to predict.
Yes, hard to predict. So you see, if you look at City Hall Maintenance, and you look down, halfway down at, at account number four twenty-two, you see electrical service, and I only have ten thousand there where previously, um, it had been higher. And it's just really a function of, um, that re, that reallocation.
So those are the credits that we get from our solar panels up there?
Yeah, and, and they were reallocated between different cost centers, and we're just getting them straightened out, realigning them.
But just to be clear, there's two parts of the solar, because there's a part where we get the credit, which we apply to the National Grid bills, but then there's a part where we pay out to the company that built the infrastructure at no cost to us, so we do make a payment to them. And you see that elsewhere.
A lease arrangement, would you, a lease arrangement?
Yeah, twenty-five billion.
Right, okay. So I have a question on the City Hall Maintenance. So, we tried and tried to fill that position, didn't, and then, so now we've defunded it, but, like, what, describe for me what we, what service we're losing by not having that third person.
So what we do historically, and we have, at least since I've been here, is we often move maintenance people around. So Walter Bellstedt, who does a great job down at our rec center, he has a great skill in painting. So over the next couple of months, he'll be at the police station painting. And one of our maintenance men will, from the police station, will be going down, labor classification, be going to the rec center, doing, um, some maintenance down there in the mornings. So we constantly move people around wherever the need exists.
So it's not a matter of, like, Julius and Tyrone need the help here in the building, but if we had that third line filled, we would have another person that we could use?
Yeah.
In a variety of capacities around the city?
Yes.
Okay. That, thank you.
Joey?
Heather, I just, I, I just want to go back to page twenty-one, real quick question here. So, year-to-date, twenty-two, twenty-three, we're at three hundred and four thousand nine hundred and nineteen. Why?
For what, for what, John?
It's, I, I should have asked it before, but why do we go down to two sixty-four, four fifty-six, when you were saying you were putting on additional?
Oh, very good question, Councilman. This is a question I'd love to have. So every year, what happens is, because of our paving program, all the expenses go into engineering, and then they, we do what we call charge backs, and money is pulled out and put to paving. So Austin, who spent almost a hundred percent of his time on paving, well, probably this year, maybe eighty, seventy percent or eighty, that seventy percent or eighty percent of his salary will be taken out of that line and put towards the paving line to show a true, a true-up for what our paving installation costs. It will be his fuel, you'll see fuel high here, and fuel will be coming down. So any, uh, costs associated with paving gets put back to the capital fund for paving expenditures. So there's a, uh, Mike Mustard manages that, I don't, I don't have anything to do with it, I see it when it's done. Um, but, uh, once a quarter, that happens.
So meaning the?
So why is it less, though? That's what I don't understand. It was, you requested three oh-four, now it's only going to be two sixty-four.
Because, um, we're now accounting for a little more properly. We've hired a couple, two positions, and that, those positions, and we've gotten rid of a position, is going to be going towards paving, that's what they spend their entire time on.
So that they're, rather than doing a charge back after the fact?
That's right.
To paving, we're put, we're building it into paving from the get-go?
Yeah.
Because they'll, they'll do paving a hundred percent.
Right.
So some other line is going to be higher, then? That forty thousand is going to be on a different line?
Paving. So we're going to see that reflected in paving?
Yep.
It's just like Stephanie comes out of the sewer fund, because you don't, you don't see her.
Oh, her staff.
Her seller.
Her seller.
Her seller.
Not her herself.
You see, you see her in.
We see her, she's here.
She's under the org chart, and then you see her out, so it's, it, it comes and goes. Um, okay, City Hall Maintenance, then, on back, back on page twenty-two, we have Facilities Department. So George Sabo, who previously had been a full-time employee, retired in the middle of the year. He has come back part-time, that's why you see thirty-five thousand dollars for him. We're very lucky to have him with his historical knowledge and also kind of keeping expenses.
George is the, the one who's traditionally stripes roads, Mike?
He stripes, and he takes care of the garages, plows and saws.
And takes care, like, he saw on the front of the, he front, he saw the?
Bottom twenty-two.
The vast expanse of concrete that's from?
Not out here anywhere.
Brad does it now.
We, we, um, we have a different tractor. But to be really, on the new concrete, you have to be very careful what type of salt you put on it.
Oh, I bet. So can I ask a question? Is, with, with George only being part-time, is he going to be able to keep up with our striping needs?
Well, historically, George does the extras that we don't put in paving.
Okay.
So, I mean, obviously, there's, there's always a need for striping, um, but a lot of it is done through paving. He does the extra stuff.
Okay.
You know, if we touch a, a crosswalk, or?
Sure.
When we did all the little parking spaces on Genesee Street, George did that, but then when?
The green stripe.
Austin paved it and did it, he put the, he put them back in.
So is he still going to be able to do those little sort of?
The little stuff, yeah, as, as we can.
If it's a Friday, he'll be painting the line down Genesee.
Right, yeah, yeah, I saw that, that's great. That's great.
Okay, onto page twenty-three, we have D. P. W., Central Garage. Um, just a, a note, I note every year, um, I believe it's January now that you bid on the positions, John, is it January? It used to be April, um, which meant the budget was always wrong the day it was issued. Um, now they bid on the jobs in January, that's the D. P. W. sewer, they can bid on positions and, and, um, first, second, or third shifts. Um, so that salary line's constantly always moving around, depending on who, who got the bid, um, for that year. Um, what else do I have to say about this? There was a couple of decreases, um, you know, we see auto materials, um, that, that was predicated on getting four new plows this year, um, and I think we're going to get two in the summer.
We'll have two, two trucks this summer, and then, uh, two more the following year, and then two more the following year after that.
It's going on our capital plan, right?
Yes. Part of it's ARPA, part of it's that, but that's why, you know, we reduce some of the expenditures because we'll be getting some of those older plows off the streets.
Very good.
And you cut seventy thousand, go towards the payment. Wonderful job.
So I have a question on page twenty-three. So, um, the department, I'm, I'm looking at fuel, line four six three.
Yeah.
Um, so you requested two thirty, and we're giving you two fifteen. I mean, one of the things that we see, the real pattern coming through E. N. A. is needing to adjust for the rise of costs of fuel, so why not two thirty?
It should be going the other way, a little bit.
We hope.
Okay, fingers crossed.
Because we're, we're seeing it come down a little bit.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I'm concerned that we're still going to, yeah, yeah. It's probably not going to come down by fifteen thousand worth, though, right?
Never know.
I mean, we're talking a whole year, so.
Wouldn't we be better off, I'm sorry, wouldn't we be better off putting a higher number in that? And if we, if it's, then it's extra at the end, instead of having to keep chasing?
Yeah, that's it. So this, this is the tough part when it comes to budgeting, right?
That's me.
So last year, we had a three million dollar surplus, and everybody wanted to know why, why do we have such a big surplus? We know a lot of it had to do with sales tax, but we also reduced expenditures. So part of what at least this mayor has tried to do in his administrations is, when we see things going up and things coming down, to talk about it every week at his staff meetings and constantly move money. And so, you could, you could reduce something if you'd like to get that number up, you could propose, you know, more revenues in an account and move that number up, but it was something that when we talked internally and just taking a look at where oil prices are and watching the industry, the industry expects to keep us right between the seventy-five and eighty-five dollar per barrel, a number, for the next year. Um, so that's why we left that number where it was. Any questions?
Bobby?
Yeah.
I don't see salt listed.
You, you will, it's farther down at a different cost center on the budget, so hang in there a couple more minutes, and you'll see it.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, anything more on that? Okay, if we turn to page thirty-six, um, we have our sign shop. Um, our sign shop, um, is reduced. Um, we budgeted quite a bit of money this year for other supplies, or quite a bit of special signs. Um, and the mayor felt that he, especially as it related to all our ARPA signs, here we grow again, um, and that we wouldn't see that kind of increase for this next year. We didn't anticipate special, that many more special signs for the year.
So can you talk to me about other equipment there? What's going on there that we, you wanted five, and you're getting none?
Yeah, uh, often what happens, and, and I mean, um, Dave could address this if you'd like, often what happens is there's a lot of, goes back to Councilman Beatrice's question on the fuel, there often is money put aside in different places, and hopefully, you know, if we isolate something that there's a need for, the money is sitting there. And so, the mayor felt strongly this year, just because of past surpluses, that he wanted to see that if, if it didn't have a definite use, that he felt, um, was necessary, that he wanted to zero it out.
I just got a quick question. What we, what the lease payments are for the sign department, not the truck?
There was a printer.
Oh, a printer?
A printer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Does that, anything more on that? Okay. Um, our next item is, is codes part of this meeting? Yes, codes, here. So, um, I'll just go through codes since, um, I'm page forty-three, building codes. Um, as you may recall, and, and maybe you don't realize this, but we had a realignment of our codes department this past year. At the same time, we also added an electrical inspector. You'll notice under the revenue portion, the electrical inspector has paid for himself for the additional position, which is what we represented to the E. N. A. So we're pretty excited about that, that we have, we didn't have to use a third party anymore. We have a totally dedicated individual, in Larry Kenny, who does a fantastic job. Um, this past year, as it relates to both building and city codes, a lot, kind of a lot took place. We have used cars that have been handed down from the Police Department that needed a number of repairs because of their age and their transmissions, so we did a lot of work to them, um, in anticipation of getting more cars from the Police Department, some leases that came off lease. The Police Department still has not, um, received all their cars that they ordered a year and a half ago, let alone what goes into the future.
A year and a half ago?
Oh, yeah.
Long lead time.
Yeah, long wait time. Um, we're still waiting.
That's good.
But, um, the mayor, um, has committed to the council that he would buy two electric cars. Um, we're going to be buying those for codes, um, like now.
I was going to say, but though, I mean, those we wouldn't have to wait on, we could go buy those off a lot tomorrow.
Right, and, and, yeah, and Engineering?
We're, we actually, we're working on it.
Right now, yeah.
It's, it's not as easy as you think.
Okay.
Um, we're competing with everybody else out there, and, you know, because they give, you know, better, a little bit better pricing to the city, we're like last in line to get a car. So we may end up having to pay full shot for it. And we're looking at Chevy bolts at the moment.
What are we buying? Okay. Two of them?
Two.
Also, in codes, um, this past year, Marcus spent a lot of time, morale boosting, he got out, got new uniforms, new boots, which was, had been severely lacking in the past couple of years. Um, and also implemented a training program, so we've had some people actually go to training. And, you know, when you usually have surpluses, that's the luxury you can get, you can send people to training. So there's been a lot more of that going on. Um, I also believe you did something with your software, and, uh, did you?
We haven't yet, um, Frank says he's going to do it next year. Um, the, the idea behind the software is just codes and fire department run on the same systems, and the public has to foil it, we have to look it up, we have to give it to the public. Trying to get a system where, if you're public, you can look up all the codes complaints on a property, um, all the code records.
That's great.
So, you, you cost money, though. And then the thing, she was talking about the uniforms, I got new people. Um, we usually buy them two shirts, two pairs of pants, and a jacket every year. Um, you know, somebody's been there for twenty years now, will have forty different code uniforms. I, I, I can't have, you know, I got a lot of new people, and I got two uniforms. I mean, they look disgusting, they wash them, they fade, and, you know, so I had to buy a quick, I'm still not done. I mean, I, I have to buy them enough uniforms so they can keep them clean and, and look decent. Um, so those are those two things.
So, as it relates to codes, that's kind of all that's new this year in codes. Um, I will say, uh, uh, two, two other notes. Um, the mayor has been, um, very vigilant about grass cutting, so we've seen our revenues, when we talk about revenues on Thursday, you'll see our revenues have increased quite a bit, and it's the codes department that's been working with D. P. W. and getting out there and getting, um, some of our vacant properties and cleared up. Not even vacant, some of them are just, they won't do it, they won't cut the grass, they won't pick up the garbage. And so to obey, it's really been our codes department, our D. P. W. department, working hand in hand, and you'll see revenues have really jumped, but that's because they've been doing the hard work. Um, and, and, and number two, um, I know last year was sort of a hot-button issue, it isn't this year. Um, the county granted us a two-year contract with them, um, with our codes department, um, and I believe that passed. Um, that was something we had worked on, Marcus and myself, with, with the county, um, about six months ago. So we have a two-year, so, um, I mean, that's all set for this current year of, um, this past year of twenty-two and for twenty-three.
Is that for three, that's for three hundred a year?
Yes, two, two eighty-two.
And you, you guys might not care, I probably talk too much, but I'll elaborate a little bit. Um, so it used to be just so that we do codes inspections at the request of the county. Um, and we sat down together, me, Heather, and some people from the county and the mayor, um, to how, how we can do a better job to serve people. So now, adult protective, CPS, caseworkers, they co-respond with us. And so, we, we show up to people's houses with caseworkers, and that's new, that's something different.
I know, that's great.
Yeah, that's cool.
That's what you call cleaning up a residence. Bobby?
When you talk about this debate, how many, how many cases do we have in court against citizens who are not complying to city codes?
Well, that's part of the strategy shift, so, uh, court gives them time to pick something up. Um, we can do what's called abate, to, to obey the public nuisance. Um, we call the Parks Department, and we've put a lot of pressure on them. Um, we've called the Parks Department to pick it up and then bill this, the person on their taxes. So like, when I took office, um, the, the code used to do about two hundred abatements a year. Um, last year, we did seven hundred and ninety.
Awesome.
So it's, it's four times as much, but you're taking people out of the parks to go clean up garbage and cut grass, and that's putting a strain on their department. So we try to balance, like, taking care of the stuff and getting the garbage and, garbage up in the grass, but understanding that we're robbing Peter to pay Paul in, in some respects. Um, but at least this way gets it done. We're very frustrated by the city court process. Um, I ticket people, and even on the council, you guys know, you guys all call me and say, what'd you do with this? What'd you do with that? I put them in court, I don't know, the judge. Um, they give them months, and then they fine them twenty dollars at the end of three months. I mean, so I?
And it's still not cleaned.
Yeah, and it's still not cleaned. We got to ticket them again. So we're trying to do more abatements, but we understand the limitations of the Parks Department.
Do we need to adjust adding more people to assist in the abatement process?
I mean, that would be perks.
So our, yeah, and, and I misspoke, I said D. P. W. and not Parks, because I know D. P. W. does assist. Um, we struggle from time to time with Parks employees, when we get to the Parks Cost Center, you'll see, you know, money there for seasonal labors. Um, the past couple of years, just, a, and I know there's always controversy over as to what we pay. This past year, you know, we, we did settle a contract with C. S. E. A., um, and everybody got three percent raises, and it went back, but we also, the mayor, um, the union came to the mayor and asked for a dollar an hour increase. Um, and, you know, and, and part of that, the mayor requested that he would do it for one year. Um, but his big concern is, is litter. His big concern is that when someone, Parks employees, driving down the street, they see a, a grocery cart, just like with D. P. W., that, you know, we pick up the grocery cart and we remove it. Or if there's litter, if you're out, and if, if you're out at a park, you don't drive over the litter and shred it, that you pick it up. And so they committed to doing that. Um, I, I, you know, I haven't checked in with the mayor to see if he was pleased with the past summer. I know that they worked pretty hard towards that, Dave, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
Uh, it's something that the mayor has requested in the past. Um, Parks is doing their best to honor that extra dollar that they're receiving. Uh, the seasonal labors really come into play for all this. Uh, in the past, we were able to get seasonal labors, last several years, especially since COVID. It's very hard to find those seasonal labors, uh, and they're the ones that really do the nitty-gritty work that we asked them to do.
And I, I just want to clarify, too, David's never said no to an abatement. It's, it's, the consciousness comes on our part, we see it's taken him, you know, two weeks to get to an abatement because there, there are other staffs, so we, we hold back a little bit, but it's never been like Park said, no, we can't do this. Um, we've been. We've been working really well together, and they work super hard.
Is, is broken glass on the first, on the ground floor an abatement issue?
Eh, you know. Public health and safety, you can say yes. What do you site it under? It depends on where the broken glass comes from. Is it garbage? Is it a broken window? It's debatable, but...
Oh, I meant, I meant a broken pane of glass. I don't mean glass on the ground.
Well, we could board it. We have to secure the window. So, we could board it. And Parks boards it and is in charge of it. Look, the hope is, so usually they're repeat offenders. You guys all know, we can call out, most of the properties here off the top of our heads. Mostly, they're repeat offenders. The hope is, once they start getting those tax bills, that, that they, they start taking more care of their property. And we've seen some of that. The issue with it is, they used to in the past be able to come down, talk to the controller, talk to the codes commissioner, you know, get the bill taken care of. We don't take care of bills anymore. If you had a violation and we picked it up, you pay it. And, and so, I think that as people start to get the message, it'll get better and better. At least, that's the hope. Because they're in the same houses. Or, the tax bill will be too high, and, and we'll just foreclose on their property because they can't pay the taxes.
Meaning that there's a certain learning curve to them learning that they're gonna actually have to pay?
Right. And I think it's been about three years, so I think they're getting there.
Okay, okay.
We hope, yeah.
Anything else with codes?
Heather, I just got a quick question with codes. The, the cars we're, we're buying or leasing?
We're buying, we're buying.
You wanna buy electric cars?
Yes. Anything else on codes?
Yeah, why would you do that?
Because it was a commitment the mayor made to the...
Well, wouldn't it be better if you leased them?
It's just a financing. Just a financing. If it's cheaper to lease them, we'll lease them. But right now, the leasing rates are such that it's exorbitant. That's why sometimes, you know, we, we still have leases in here. Forget, it's not about the, the operating leases of the printers and copy machines. It's not those kind, there's capital leases. And all that means is, instead of us going out and issuing a bond or a ban for it, we leased it. We're still paying for it. It's just a different type of interest rate. Sometimes leases are cheaper. Like, when you go to buy a car, sometimes the interest rate is cheaper than buying a car and borrowing the money and vice versa. It just is what all the market will bear and the timing of that.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to lower the depreciation rate for those electric cars, though. Alright?
Can you have a question? Oh.
Hey, Marcus.
Yeah?
When we did that, you know, fines, we put on, you know, when we mowed our lawns and everything, oh, we had to abate it. When did we, what, was it about three or four years ago we did that?
About three years ago. Well, we increased.
We, we increased the prices, or?
We increased the prices.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that we're staying...
Yeah, we wanted to make sure we covered it, and we go up with the prices. And look, fuel costs more, people cost more, tools cost more. We work with Fred Sperry and Dave to try to, to try to set prices because we can't profit off of it. The, the only thing I'll add, you gave me a chance to talk again, so you'll, you'll be sorry. The only thing I'll add about codes is, you know, when you hear about the cars and uniforms and stuff, and Heather talks about morale, I like my codes group. If you guys know your codes officers, they're all in the officers. I like them. We speak seven languages in the department. It's a good group. So, so my focus as commissioner, what I think is to get them training, like Heather said, and to get them experienced, and to try to keep people. The turnover's too much because it, it takes them a year to train. And then, they find a better job because they're making twenty-seven thousand dollars a year, and they're driving a car that's gonna kill them, and, you know. So, we're, we're working on giving them ladders of opportunity. That's why we created promotional positions and getting them equipment and uniforms that are so suitable for professional officers working in the city.
Any other questions?
No, that's, all it was, was just, you know, if you need to increase the prices or not, you know, that's all.
Maybe we'll do it again one day.
Okay.
We're okay now.
Alright.
Any other questions for the codes?
But, but to the councilman's point, the, the mayor doesn't wanna have our, our men and women going out and doing the abatements. Right? And so, if you, if you make it cost prohibitive, to your point, then perhaps they will, they will mow their own yard.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I guess you can't make a profit off of it, but, you know, for this, they're paying the minimum. It's like, okay, we're just gonna hire the city unit to mow our grass every, every month because it's the same price as somebody else would do it.
So, what we've done and what we've tried, and we can go again, is we did an escalating cost. And we base that on the time, not just of the abatement, but in the codes officer's time that it takes to monitor that property. So, the second time you do it, it's fifty percent more. The third time you do it, it's seventy-five percent more. The fourth time is a hundred percent more. Maybe one day, we'll make that jump from one to two, a hundred percent. You know, because it does take my officers the same properties they're on. And, and, and it's tough, because I got six of them that are doing that kind of patrol work that you guys like. And, you know, they, I got inspection that needs three officers. These properties are annoying. I could point them out, and we're trying to deter them from being annoying.
Can, can you tell whether that step thing, in terms of the escalating cost, can you tell whether, how much of a deterrent value that has?
Um, deterrence is a tough word because I don't know...
It's hard to measure, right?
Until I look it up. It's hard to measure because our, our, the, the total abatements we're doing is going up. Most of the people that we have to obey, they fall into, like, that we, they fall into basically three categories. Somebody that's dead and we're just waiting for the house to go into tax arrears, to be honest. There's nobody for them to pass it on to, and the house becomes just like lingering there. One, are people out of state that just have so much money that they don't care what the tax bill is. It's, they got a portfolio of five hundred and seventy-three houses, and this is number five hundred and seventy. And it wouldn't matter if it was five thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars. They just pay it. And then, and then the other people are local landlords that don't take care of their own properties. They usually have a property maintenance company. The property maintenance company isn't doing what the landlord pays them to do, and they don't check on them, and they always have excuses. I mean, that's basically who the abatements are.
You've got a good example of that house next to Copernicus Park.
Yeah.
Because, how many times have we abated that one, and the guy just pays taxes?
He's just Manhattan-based. I mean, he, he just, the guy is, it's part of his portfolio.
An accountant pays the bill, and he doesn't even realize it.
He doesn't even know what's being paid.
We just keep adding those taxes.
And we call him, I met him down here. He says he's gonna take care of it. We're working on that stuff, though. There's, there's some ideas we had, some laws. Apparently, the things you have to do have to be constitutional. So...
Constitution is an interpretive text.
Yeah, yeah. So, we're trying to figure out what to do with those kinds of properties. Because there is quite a bit of them where the people just have the money, and they, they care, they don't care.
I, I know that this isn't really the meeting for it, but fourteen oh two Genesee, for, the Benedict, somebody put a brick through the, a huge plate glass, the fourteen oh two plate glass.
I'll file the plate with your courts department.
I noticed it today, yeah.
We'll put a, we'll put a board on it, Dave.
Whose board is that?
Let me know. The problem with board is, it's hard to find plywood all the time. So, a lot of times, we're waiting a month, two months for more plywood to come in.
Just happened.
We'll work on it. I mean, we do have, if you're interested in what's going on in the city, we're, we're working on some of these bigger apartment buildings. I think you'll see big improvements. They've committed to making some investments, historical apartments, Lillian Cooper Genesee Towers. And we do have a problem with vagrants staying in abandoned buildings like we've never had before. And that causes an issue when you're going to board and secure a building because there's people living in there.
Right, right.
And so, then, now we gotta clear all the buildings first. I mean, it's never been this bad, and there's actually been some tragic events that have happened inside these vacant houses, so...
So, speaking of Lillian Cooper, they had a shelter rent agreement with us whereby we could clawback that if they were not, if they didn't make certain investments in the building, as I recall.
That was a very innovative pilot agreement, and I think the budget director did an amazing job on that. Yes. The properties like that, if they don't pull the building permits and fix it up within seven years, then their pilot agreement goes away.
Seven years?
Well, and we've been meeting with them.
Okay.
To Marcus's point, Marcus has been integral to that, and, and the police department and the fire department. We've had some, we've had some significant problems in that building.
Right.
At first, they told us they, you know, it was COVID-related, and they couldn't hire anyone. And, so, the mayor dispatched the, the fire department to get over there and, and do some, just really assertive inspections along with our codes department. So, it's, it's getting, it's getting better. But we have reminded them that, you know, we have long memories, and if things don't get better quick, we'll do everything we can to pull that pilot.
Because I, I mean, that was part of why the council in twenty twenty agreed to that pilot, was the assurance that we would be able to clawback if they didn't step up.
The issue was, it's seven years because the bank wouldn't provide the financing that they needed unless they had so much...
To do the work.
To do the work. Unless they had some assurance that the pilot was gonna last.
The tenants...
So, it's a catch twenty-two.
Right, right.
And so, the bank calculated seven years was enough. It was a negotiation. At first, they said fifteen, then they said twelve, and we said zero, zero, then we said seven. So, they have to do work. They have the financing to do the work. But they own, like, four properties here, and they own, you know, a bunch...
They're based in Ohio.
Yeah, a bunch nationwide.
I just questioned what we're measuring is better. Right now, they had somebody throw in, actually, their glass door was broken into, and it's all shattered as well. And the tenants want surveillance cameras back, and it still hasn't happened, so...
So, they promised us that they're getting surveillance cameras. They were working with our police department, which ones to get. That's part of their capital agreement. They have, they have an agreement with us to provide certain things. Surveillance cameras is part of it. It's just which cameras they're getting. But they, they, I won't disagree that they're slow-walking it. But I, but I think it's, it's, it's imminent.
Wait, wait, I mean, I, and that's just horrible to say. I think we're doing better than we were. There, there was people living in the elevator in a, a very bad state of feces and things. So, I think that's been cleared up, so...
They had people, look, if we, you guys were all part of this. When we, you know, there's a homeless encampment, we kick people out. They're, they're staying in Nurses Park, we kick people out. They're staying underneath the State Bridge, we kick people out. They go somewhere. And there's homeless people living in the hallways and in the elevators of a place like Lillian Cooper. And there's people that live in there that, that are discouraged by that, that move, that are long-term tenants, and who you replace them with is okay with the homeless guy sleeping in the elevator. Right? And there's just very little we can do about it unless we get management on our side to actually move these people out.
Any more questions on codes? The bottom of page forty-four is DPW Street Maintenance. This basically deals with our sidewalk program. As you know, we increased our, our reimbursement for sidewalks last year. Someone say something?
Yes.
He's excited.
He's excited. You know, so we've seen a little bit of an uptick in them. I don't know that, and I don't, Mike or Brian, if you can, I, we've seen a little bit of an uptick in them, but we didn't see a huge amount that we thought we'd see.
We exhausted the city funds, but not Brian's funds.
There's a, there's a lot of CFA money for sidewalks? Are we applying for that?
Well, we haven't, when you, there's, there's a lot of CFA money.
There are grants in the CFA for sidewalks?
Yeah.
Are we applying for those?
Not at this point.
Okay.
But we will take a look at it.
Okay.
So, really isn't much there for street maintenance. DP, DPW Garage. I will say, because John brought this up, we, I had zeroed out other equipment. That's sometimes when, I think our blades, is that where that comes from?
It's, no, that's when you get to the saw.
Okay, saw. So, let me see here.
Other equipment, if we need to replace a lift for the, the trucks.
So, this big change in this cost center is just...
At some point, we have to replace the gas pump that we have. So, that's basically that.
The big change in this cost center is the electrical service, which I mentioned before. Under street lighting. There again, this is not gonna annualize properly until next year. We just have finished the street lighting program, the implementation of it all. So, there were accounts coming off, accounts being added, all kinds of things happening there. But, at the end of the day, that will annualize itself, that, that project finally comes to a conclusion.
Where are you?
I'm on page forty-five, down at the bottom.
Street lighting?
Street lighting?
Oh, okay.
Okay. But I will say Matt Faffley, he's done a fantastic job. And, what's it, Brad? Brad Copley, who, who assists him. They're constantly out doing traffic signals, doing street lighting. We now have the ability to get on, on the phone, on Matt's phone. He can see when a street light is out. We don't have to wait for someone to call us. We've had a number of them out, so if, if you do get a call about it. When the contractors, the vendors went out there to change the headlights out, there were crimping in switches and wiring that needed to take place, and that didn't always happen.
The, the crimps weren't good.
Crimps weren't good, so he's out kind of managing that and making sure all that gets done.
The crimp from the private contractor, what was that, two years ago?
The problem is with the freeze thaw and moisture getting in there, it pushes the crimp apart.
Right.
So, it's not like I can, you know, the contractor's not gonna come back and hit every light. So, we've, we've been doing it ourselves. And then, there's, there's lights, as you know, that are in really rough shape. Gold green poles that are fed overhead, we had to take out of the project. So, we're working as, on a one-on-one basis on what to do with those.
Can I ask, is it, is it possible that, because of those, the thing that you just described, Mike? There's just so much of that, that what it would mean, given all the other work that Matt is already doing, that he's just not gonna be able to...
Matt, Matt won't be able to do that.
Right.
Yeah. It's stuff that has to be hired up, but the problem is, it's expensive. Because, you know, you, so what we're doing right now is, we're trying to figure out all the lights that we can replace a green pole, like along Genesee Street. If we can put the light on a wooden pole...
On a wooden pole that's already there.
And get rid of that light.
Right.
So, that's what we're trying to do right now. And then, we'll go through, because all those poles are, are supposed to be fed underground.
Right.
So, which is why our contractor couldn't touch them, because we can't, we're not allowed to feed them overhead, even though National Grid did it. We can't do that. So, we're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to work on the infrastructure of getting the lights that we can replace underground fed again.
And then, let's say, let's say that we replace a crappy green pole by, there's a near enough wooden pole. We put the arm and the light on that. Then, we have to take out the base, grind it down, and then just slap some fresh concrete over it? Something like that?
Well, if it's in the, if it's in the...
If it's in the sidewalk?
If it's in the sidewalk, we have to replace the slab. If it's in the grass, we'll have to dig it down and replace it with saw.
Right, okay, right, right.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to parking garages. So, this, this was a cost center that changed pretty radically this year. As you know, we received a grant from the state of New York, DASNY funding, to put in gates in our garages. Previously, we had several different people that were collecting funds, sometimes not. Especially during COVID, we lost all, the majority of our garage, parking garage collectors. So, we, we did get a gate put in. We've got, I think, two gates put in, right, Mike, or just one?
We've got, so far, we've got Washington Garage, the gates were in there. It's been a learning, a learning curve on us. It's been a learning curve on us, you know, they're, they're machines, they don't quite work the way I expected them to, but we're working through the issues. Um, we're about to put the gates in the second garage, which is Utica Place Garage, which hopefully will do a couple of things, like take care of the kids screwing around in there at night. Doesn't take care of homeless complaints, but it will take care of the extras, as long as they don't break the gates, which is also a concern.
So we really only have, um, one or two individuals that's now assisting us with this, and that's why you see the wage line go down pretty dramatically. You can see that we hadn't been expending it anyway, and that was primarily during, due to COVID.
But it went down by half in terms of what we, right.
Yeah.
And, and the Washington Street is actually, because, you know, I told, this was, when we first put it in, and I tried to pay, and the guy wouldn't let me.
Well, and so, and to Mike's point, there's been some learning curves, like it doesn't, it doesn't accept American Express. Some people are putting their hotel key in, expecting to pay that way. Um, it does go directly to our police department, so at night, if there's no one around here, they can, they can always let them out, they have that ability at the police department.
Okay.
Um, I will say, our engineering department did a great job, most especially, um.
Gene Santa Croce.
Santa Croce the third. Um, he really worked with Delta Hotels, and we have a new agreement. When we talk about revenues on Thursday, you're going to see the numbers up there dramatically. We're now bringing in about twelve grand a month from Delta.
That's awesome.
Yes, it is, and it's not.
Especially when they only use $30,000 a year.
Yeah, yeah.
And Delta has gotten used to that idea.
They have.
They were a little bit cranky about it at first, correct?
They were more than cranky.
Yeah, yeah, they were more than cranky, but they realized they had just like all the rest of their hotels, they passed that, that fee along to the patron. Um, and so we've had some bumps in the road, but it's pretty exciting, our engineering department really has worked through it, so, um, that's kind of the difference on the. Any more questions on parking garages?
About regular parking, do we have plans to put meters downtown and all that?
So initially, um, when we applied for the grant, that was part of the grant plan. Um, as, as, as we go forward right now, I don't know that there's enough funding left within the grant to do that. I know it's something that, um, the commissioner really thinks is, is important to do, and so does the mayor. Um, but we have to allocate funding for that to make that happen.
We still have two parking lots that we have to meter before we even get to doing.
To meters on the street.
Beyond the street, so we have the one next to the Stanley, and we also have the Union Parking Lot.
I will add, I will add two other things on that, it's kind of a revenue, um, item. Number one, um, the mayor has been, um, very vigilant, um, in working with our chief Williams about parking tickets. We're seeing parking tickets go up, you get four or five years, yeah, seven or eight years ago, our parking ticket revenue was much bigger than it is today. Um, but over the past year, we've seen that gone up, we're now have two individuals that are doing it, they also do animal control, but they also do the parking tickets. And then the second item was, um, something that we came up with upstairs, um, in working with the controller's office. You can come in and buy a overnight parking pass for a year, and it used to be you could do it whenever you wanted to. And so that created a lot of bookkeeping problems, you could do it October to October, November to November. Now we're doing it on an annual basis and by color. So when you're, you're doing an overnight parking on the street, the police officer can simply look at the color of the parking, the parking pass that's in your window. They don't have to get out of their car and come up to see what the date was, does it say October, they can see the color. So that, that got implemented this past January, so we're pretty excited about that, that's, you know, it's increasing costs a little bit, we did raise the cost a little bit. But it also is increasing, um, or actually reducing the need for the police, police officer to get out of their car to issue a, to issue a ticket.
Which means that they can issue more in a, in the same period of time.
Yeah.
So back to the, to the parking meters on the street, what would, what would the return on investment be on that? Like how, how much are they, how quickly do you make money from them?
Well, I think it depends on the parking demand.
Right.
But the machine, the pay station generally costs around fifteen thousand dollars. I think last time we, we priced them out.
Okay.
A piece.
Right.
It's not like the old-fashioned meters.
No, it's not a meter.
No, it handles multiple spaces.
And it's an app, you put an app on your phone, and they're really actually great. You put an app on your phone and you're in a restaurant and it tells you it's about to, and you've just took up your time, it's really cool. But I would think that those would pay for themselves fairly quickly, fifteen thousand each, I don't know. They might pay for themselves in three years?
Yeah, I, I.
I know.
But there's also annual charges that go along with that, because every one of those machines, you're going to have to have an air card in. So you get the, like, so it's like a cell phone, you get the cheapest rate.
Right.
You're going to have that cost, but, you know, times it by helmet, however many you put in.
Right, so it's a, it's a complicated calculation, but it seems to me that it's worth doing, because what if it took us only three years to make the money back, and then we're just, then we're just making money?
How many would you need?
I think the parking lots were the first goal.
Yeah.
Because it's the most used.
Uh, the, if we did, the multi-space meters, um, I believe the recommendation, when we met with the parking consultants, was two per side, per block. So you'd need four in a block, two on each side of the street.
So we would take down every sign that we put up now to put those up?
In their stores.
Well, you probably just straps more signs to the kiosses.
I'm just thinking ahead.
We appreciate that.
And then we'll pile the sidewalks too, just make sure it's accessible.
Heather, I just want to ask you a question. I know we have DRI, maybe some money left over, is there any way the city can get their hands on that, maybe pay for it? Or is it just restricted to the businesses down there?
So let me ask a question that, if you don't, nobody has to answer this question. There's always been a view that, I think, that the council would struggle with this, we would have to come to you for this, because you set the rates. You, I don't know that it's your decision if they go in or they don't go in, but it's your decision if, if, if there's a, a rate structure put in place for this.
You part of the schedule?
Yes. And so there's, there's always been discussion in the administration whether this is something that the council would favor. Is it, I mean, if you're open to it, we can, we, I think that the mayor would be very open to, to looking to do it sooner rather than later.
May I? I, I think that parking should never be free. I think that's.
It's, it's an asset we're giving away right now.
Right, it's, it's an asset that we're giving away, it, it, parking should never be free. Then if you're running it for fifteen minutes, you pay a very little, you might pay.
People will then probably choose to go through the drive-through at Dunkin' instead of going to buy.
I'm not sure that there's any evidence, I think.
I don't know, I'm just suggesting.
But I think that this is actually something that urban planners study, and that one of the things that happens is when parking isn't free, people are actually not going to leave their car there for too long, and you're going to have more turnover, and that actually is better for local businesses.
Correct, and it forces long-term parkers to off-street lots and parking garages, which is where they really belong, not, not on-street spaces.
As evidence by our state office building.
Right, right.
I mean, the state and some of the county, uh, people, employees, they go out and move their cars every ninety minutes, it's ridiculous.
It's ridiculous, right. So parking should never be free, and it should never be long-term on the street, we should be smart about this. I, I would be all for, yeah, investing in this.
Let's do a cost study first.
I'll do it.
And then we'll do a fee schedule first.
Sure. I wasn't ready to vote, right?
So when you, when you say four to a block, how many block, where would we go with it? How many blocks are you talking about? You're going right through all of Genesee Street?
Downtown and, and the government areas, right?
Our intent was, if we had the funding available within the DASNY grant, was to focus, concentrate on the blocks around the state and county office building, and then move out from there. Largely focusing then on, on further along Genesee Street.
So like up of Genesee, past the Parkway and all that, you would do.
No, not.
Oh, no, it was going to be a cottage, maybe, right?
Downtown.
Cottage, maybe?
Just the downtown area.
Yes.
Okay, um.
I have one more question about those permits. Are there a lot of abuses where the, there's parking available to these people and they're not taking it? Because they'd rather park in the street overnight instead of parking in the driveway, where they kept to move four or five people out? Because they're the first going in, and you got three people parking behind them, I mean.
The, the police department does go out and look, when, when someone gives us the application, we give it to the police department to go out and look. We've also tried to limit it, to like, if, you know, if you have college students, it's only two in an apartment type of thing. So they've tried, but one thing they didn't notice when they changed the color, all of a sudden, a lot of people came in and it permits were three and four years old, that hadn't bothered to renew, so.
But, but what I will commit, uh, to all of you is that we'll, we'll do a final reconciliation as to where that DASNY money sits, we'll find out how much is left. Um, because we did have some overages on the, on the, on a couple of things, and, um, and then come up with a plan and come down and visit you in the short term. Thank you. Uh, next up on page forty-seven, uh, is parks maintenance. I will say that i- i- if you take a look at the wage line, the one oh-two, you can see, we should be at a higher number than four fifty-five versus six forty-four. We have, we have put everything in as fully funded, even though we have several openings, I think, in parks. We do, and my, and we're always out recruiting, um, for that. And so that's why, you know, our overtime was up, um, for this past year, because we had some of our regular parks employees having to pick up, um, the slack a little bit from the lack of, of individuals. Um, as we get down through the parks department, um, a little bit of a reduction in trees and flowers and shrubs. The mayor felt that, especially as it related to trees this year, we did a lot of, a lot of planting, we spent a lot of money on trees. Um, and so we could do with a little bit of a reduction there.
Seasonal employees too?
Pardon?
Seasonal employees, we use that.
Seasonal employees, well, and, and there again.
Because there wasn't too many last year.
And, and as you may, may recall, a couple of months ago, I was down doing a transfer that came to the council, where we moved that wage money to seasonal. So if we aren't able to pick them up.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll be moving some of that wage money to the seasonals.
Thank you.
I have a question there. So we're changing the line for trees and shrubs. We're not changing the amount that we expend on our tree crew, correct?
No.
Okay, because that, the, the total amount that we spend on trees and shrubs, both crew and actual trees and shrubs, is relevant to Tree City USA possibilities.
Would be a minute difference.
It's small, okay, thank you. It's still unfortunate, I don't like that.
Any other questions on parks?
Yeah, so the wage, you, you brought this to seven sixty-two, that's because we can't hire, we're looking to hire more people and we can't fill the jobs, is that?
Yeah, and it's also had to do with the, um, increase in wages this past year.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's quite, I mean, it's got to be, to go up three hundred thousand dollars almost, I mean, it's got to be more than.
Well, that's the actual, that, that's the actual, yeah.
You got to go back to the, what, the line before, Joe.
Okay.
The six forty-four.
Forty-four, the seven, okay. So we are short some employees.
Yes.
That's, are we working actually to do that?
We are, we, we regularly advertise with Indeed.com. Um, we also, as it relates to express, which is where we get our seasonal employees, we're constantly, you know, asking, don't just give us seasonals, we're looking for full-timers too. Um, so we're constantly trying to fill those positions.
We need to report people this, this afternoon already.
You do? Four, for your tree crew or for your DPW?
Four full-time parks employees.
Um, the next cost. The next cost center is on page forty-eight, infrastructure. Um, we, for the past couple of years, we've had two positions funded here, a mason and a carpenter. Um, the carpenter, our, our previous carpenter retired this past year, and the mayor was able to secure, um, a fellow, his name is Sanada, I don't remember his last name, do you? Mike? He's fantastic.
Yeah, he really is.
Knock it out of the park, fantastic. He has done everything from fixing walls and ceilings in our pool houses, to doors and, and walls at rec center. He put on the roof of the Hannah Park stage out here.
He put, not the, he, he put the floor. Yeah, just take, take a look at the new floor, it's awesome.
Unbelievable decking.
He did our break room too.
Yeah, break room, he, he's been, going to be doing all the ADA compliance work we need in this building and throughout the balance of our buildings, and he's just our go-to guy. Um, and, but what we also did was we defunded the mason position, a position that's been on the books since I've been here that we've never filled, could never find a mason. So we did defund it, and that's why there's the reduction under the infrastructure wages. Um, we have a hundred thousand dollars under there for contractual, not as much as we could have had. Um, we will be looking at that as a, as a capital item also. We still have, I want to say, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars left in the reserved fund balance for stormwater. Um, it might even be more than that, I shouldn't even have said anything, I'll have to take a look as to what we have left.
So two years ago, we spent eight, we actually spent eight hundred thousand.
We did.
And this year, we're only going to budget for one hundred thousand.
But remember, we had storms, and in there, part of that spending, not part of it, probably eighty percent of the eight hundred thousand dollars was reimbursement by FEMA from the Halloween storm. So that isn't, that wasn't, that was due to mitigation of the storm-related damage. Now, I will say.
Right, but we might want to assume that there'll be big storms again, right?
Well, part of that is the wall of DPW.
I will.
Because of the flooding, collapsed one or side, is that a separate one?
Same FEMA, but separate one.
But is that, it's not in the eight hundred then? Okay.
No, that was just the cleaning.
So that's. Look, you've got to give Stephanie credit, because she went after that.
Yeah, we're hopeful a little bit more when we can.
I will say though, the, the, the list of, of outstanding stormwater mitigation that needs to be done is really reduced to what the list was this time three years ago.
No, I know, you guys have done fantastic work, and Stephanie in particular has done fantastic work. And we've gotten way ahead on that, and it's all terrific, and to the benefit of our residents. But I just think that that's something we should never let up on, I don't think we can ever afford to let up on that. It's not the kind of thing where we fix it and cross it off a list and move on. There's going to be more big storms, and our infrastructure is going to be a day older every day, and, I don't know, I think that's very lean.
So let me ask you that question also, so this infrastructure contractual stormwater, is that where the money would come out of? For our maintenance to follow up on all the work that did the last couple of years?
Yes.
So you're saying for the whole city, last year we spent three seventy-nine to do that, you did all that work, we're going to spend a hundred thousand this year?
Yes.
So we're, so then, how's that stuff going to get done?
So is, I, I just want to follow up on Joe's question, because he's right, so it's televising and it's cleaning out catch basins and all of that?
Luckily, the cleaning and televising, because it's combined at times too, we can use the sanitary money for the cleaning and televising.
Okay.
I have estimates of work that we are trying to get done in the new year, and I'm not going to lie, it's, it's tight, but it's doable. You can maintain and budget that, um, and just do maintenance more periodically. I mean, hopefully, the goal is to readjust it as, as we need it, but I think the storm was the big deciding factor, and FEMA's finally reimbursed us for most of that work. But this will be for cleaning, with maintenance, sediment control, mostly at our outfalls, but as Heather said, we did that so extensively in the last two years, that even homeowners are calling and saying, things are great, the only, so yes, it's more of a.
Things are definitely better, there's no doubt, but it's, like I say.
It's something that's easier for our parks department to go and take care of, because it's not twenty years of buildup, it's Dave sending someone in there to cut some branches. Versus, it's so beyond.
And you open it so wide in a lot of places.
So.
I just think that's.
A hundred thousand is tight, but it's still manageable for the areas that.
Right.
I mean, we've, we've taken care of all of our wish lists, like, that have been sitting. So between that included sinkhole repairs on stormwater, installing catch basins where there's significant runoff, this is grading and drainage on Pinnacle. All of the pending things that haven't been done were addressed in the last two years, that thankfully, this is more of maintenance money than it is initiating the mitigation, if that makes sense.
It does, it does, I just.
It's, it's, it's tight, but it's.
I think it's lean, I think that we're going to expect more, these kinds of storms are going to become more normal, that, you know, we'd like to think that was a one and a hundred-year storm, but it probably wasn't.
Definitely not disagreeing with that aspect, it is a concern, but, like I said, luckily, we've been, we have planning grants for Blue and Nail, which is a big, um, watershed capturing, so with those other grants that are being implemented to find mitigation projects, I think we could get away with it for at least a year, and then see what our true cost is.
All right.
And I do want to add, um, Stephanie's been working with the town of Hartford, so, you know, where it was just, let's, let's remediate what we got locally, we're now getting to the outskirts. We, we did a big project last summer with the town of Deerfield, that was pretty exciting, we had really done that kind of work with them before, with the highway department in Deerfield. And our engineering department did some really very, very neat things there to mitigate some problems, but in New Hartford, Stephanie's been working with Brick Sherman, and they've been actually getting easements in a neighborhood where they're going to go in and clear out a pond.
No, and that's terrific, how, and where, can you just give us an update?
Yep, yep, there were eight houses in New Hartford, we went up and dropped off the forms, he's received four or five of them back already. So his goal is to be out there sometime in June, depending how spring is, we don't want it to be too wet while he's in there. Um, but similar to New Hartford, we're doing the same thing with Deerfield, we fixed Willow Drive, Beaton and Cedar Brook last year. Um, and, and we're looking at other areas that are along the curve. Um, we even met, or I had attended the task force with Sam and the Thruway and the Canal Corp, they've come. So everyone's thinking bigger picture, that before we were fighting it, like, we're all, we're the lowest, we're the valley, we're clipping everyone's runoff, we're collecting the impact of everyone, who's just kind of kicking the can, and now everyone's realizing that the impact needs to be, you know, done throughout. So I mean, before, we were calling Thruway and not getting any luck, and now they're coming to us, how are we going to fix this? So I think everyone luckily is realizing the awareness that needs to be focused on the amount of stormwater we're getting. Um, so we'd be hopeful that with shared services.
Fingers crossed for this, this year, and then really keep an eye on it this year, and if it does turn out to be too lean, then we need to come back to that next year.
I'd just like to make a comment on the Beaton and Cedar Brook Crescent. It, it's only taken us twenty-something years to get there, and Stephanie finally accomplished it and got it done. It's been a huge problem for those residents, and an embarrassment, as the water's running down the road.
It was hard to get their trust, for sure, a lot of them felt well, we've heard this story before, but we were given the opportunity. Sam Arcuri was very helpful, um, we did most of the work, but his shared services included the removal of all of the sediment, clearing of trees, and helping with one of the more troubling Deerfield neighbors, so it ended up working out well. And they've even called just a month ago and told us that it's been incredible, and their lawns are dry, and there's no ice on the road. So we're hopeful that if we keep finding little areas that people are willing to help with shared services, that we can keep making a bigger impact and be more proactive than reactive, because we'll never stay ahead of it, we keep just staying in our confines.
Speaking on the Cedar Brook Crescent project too, I followed up, uh, with that park that's going up there, there is all storm drains going in. Um, I talked to the, uh, the codes officer there, he went to the meeting, he followed up on it, so, because I was worried that that was going to be a problem there. So according to him, that's what's going on there. My only thing, just getting back to the hundred thousand, we spent, you went from eight hundred thousand to three seventy-five, we did all this work, okay? And if we don't maintain that, it's going to come back, because it comes back every storm, it fills up very fast. You know, you know what I mean? That's my only, my only concern, that's, that's very light to take back what we did in all those spots. I mean, we fixed everything, not we, you, you did a great job.
We definitely agree it's tight, we'll have to see what we can do, and hopefully, we don't run into any problems.
Because every year, it's going to be, now you're going to get in two years, you're going to need to go do this again if we're not dredging it out. Especially like up by North Utica Park there, that you cleaned all that stuff out, that water runs down there, at least we have a blacktop now, so it's not going to be.
The first time we went through this with FEMA, we did more just clean up, okay? And then within six months, we were like, oh my gosh, it's right back where we started. So we actually found mitigation pieces, so where washouts were happening at the bank, now there's riprap. I'm not denying that it's inevitably not going to keep happening, but at least more regular storms that are happening are now can be sustainable. And, I mean, even D-Land, now Dave can go and put a vehicle in there and clean it out when he needs to, or get the people in there, where before, the laborers wouldn't even go in because of the amount of sediment. So now to have done the legwork to mitigate, Dave should be able to do more of the maintenance than ever done in the past, to some extent, because it's easier to keep up with what's there when it's being prepared.
Yeah, and also, you know, with our, with our pretty aggressive paving program, you know, I hate it when Austin comes back, because he finds. know, I hate it when Austin comes back, 'cause he finds things, you know, stormwater problems. So we're actually curing a lot of things that you never would hear about, that we're getting to it before you're even hearing about it or seeing it.
That's a great point. We even add, Austin added, and we've been talking about it for years now, and I think last year, we implemented that. Every catch basin that's in the paving limits is cleaned out completely down to the sump. And if there's address that the crossover connections are full, he notifies DPW and, um, Fitz and his crew goes out and cleans them. So where before, it was turning a blind eye to it. We are finding ways to do as much maintenance as possible, um, so it's good.
Any other questions on infrastructure? Okay, playgrounds. Um, don't know that there's a huge change in playgrounds, just looking here, other than a little bit on salaries, um, not a big change there. We have tennis. Um, the last, last year, the reason why the, the budget was so high, and we've actually changed that, is that we did, um, some of the cleaning. We had some mildew, I think, or mold, mold problems on the quartz. Um, we don't have the shared pools. So, uh, we are looking at a little bit different chlorination system for our pools. You may recall, last year, our, our department just did a fabulous job. They stepped in, stepped up to help us with liquor, liquid chlorine, um, pouring it into our systems, because we were unable to get what we needed in bulk. Um, it was Tucker Pools who, we couldn't find any pool company that would sell us five gallon barrels. Um, we don't wanna do that again, a little bit dangerous, we don't wanna have to do that again. So Chet Lakanti, um, who I think we see on Thursday, um, has really taken the reins there. He's taken over from Lonnie, who retired Lonnie Jenkins. Um, him working with Dave, we'll probably hear a little bit more about that on Thursday, a new chlorination system, um, that won't be too expensive.
Salter?
Pardon?
She's going with salt?
No.
Oh, I know how much salt, not salted.
No, they're, they're three-inch tabs, but it's a system where you preload a large amount.
I think wouldn't salt would mean like changing over to-
You'd have to change over your whole-
Your whole pump system and every, all the infrastructure.
Yeah. It'd be very expensive. Those are huge pools.
Um, if we keep going, we, we move out of the ski chalet. It, it looks like it's being reduced, that, that really is, is, is not true. It's just that we have a grant right now from the Wadis Foundation that includes Hanca and some of the, the, uh, projects that he's doing up there. We have the Bertolini Clubhouse. I believe we awarded all of that.
We did.
We did. Um, and so, um-
What's the ETA of repairs on that?
Repairs, it's a recon, it's, it's an addition and reconstructive. I, you know, I'm probably very optimistic when I say the end of the year. It's construction, depends on how relative, you know, how available materials are, and but we'll get going on it and hope for the best. The, um, management contract is being advertised again tomorrow, now that we know what we're doing with the facility. So, um, I would be back out there.
Pardon?
Took the rentals out of that line?
The mayor had me keep them in.
Okey-dokey.
We can talk about that on Thursday.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Um, if we turn to page fifty-two, we have the Parkway Rec Center. Um, we have a significant number of repairs that go on up there. You see that number? Um, E&amp;As had to deal with that through, through budget transfers, um, just because of some of the stormwater-related issues and, um, the building aging out. Um, so, um, I, you know, that, that number is up just slightly, but, um, as we assess every year, we go through, Mike and his team go up there, take a look at the building along with Dave, and, and keep assessing as to what's happening up there. But I will tell you, as part of the ARPA project, we will see quite a bit of construction in and around up there, which might alleviate some of the stormwater-related issues.
So, I hate to admit that I take the elevator when I'm at the Parkway Rec Center, but I had a broken ankle, I'm sure of it. Um, but when you get in the elevator at the Parkway Rec Center, it smells like a Dollar General. And what I mean by that is that smell of off-gassing plastic. And I'm not in it for very long, so I just hold my breath. But it's, there's something, like, I, I'm assuming it's the glue that they use to put up like the vinyl, hard vinyl panels on the wa, something. It smells-
Something they're using to clean.
Or something.
I'll, I'll bring it up to them.
It's, it's really, it's like, you know what a Dollar General smells like, you know?
No, actually, I've never been in one.
That's the smell of the inside of that elevator. Off-gassing, cheap plastic.
I wonder if we got a cheap elevator.
Maybe. Or maybe we bought it at the Dollar General store.
I don't know.
Um, softball, payments to outside agencies, zoning.
At one time, I took the elevator.
Nothing's changed with that at all. We have our planning board, um, nothing's changed there. Then we move on to street cleaning for Mr. Birmaster on page fifty-three. Um, so, a lot of discussion about salt and where we are with salt. There's two very, very distinct, different, um, theories. I'm constantly on the salt, the salt kick. Um, how much salt should go down? It's not my job to decide how much salt goes down, how much should be used, when it should be done. There's one theory that we should have the streets to clear the paving.
Where is the salt?
The salt is-
Four oh two, eighty-one seventy, four oh two.
There we go, without even looking. Four oh two.
Eighty-one seventy, four oh two.
The big number.
She needs to know what page.
Other supplies.
Page fifty-three? So, it, it comes down to, and I'm sure Dave will, will, will step in here in a minute, is how often do we salt? When do we salt? How much salt do we put down? This past year, we did, um, begin brining for the very first time, which I think Dave will say has made somewhat of an impact for the first time.
Is that under that line too?
Yep, yep, because it's, it's, it's salt. It's a salt byproduct. Um, um, and we're awaiting delivery of our big salt truck, um, in the near future. Um, we've also, um, we've also had a volunteer to take training and has begun training, has trained with, a little bit with a, with the county and with the town in one person plowing. Now, this isn't something that anyone's recommending for the city overall, but there are routes where there are no parked cars on the streets, um, and, and a never-ending pursuit to try to reduce costs for our, and keep up the great service that our DPW provides. Not looking to reduce any jobs, not looking to reduce any hours, um, but some people, actually, some drivers out there in other communities actually love it when they're the only guy in the truck. So, you know, everything's different. But, but getting back to the salt, so, when, when, when this was reduced, um, Dave, Dave and I sat down and talked about the reduction. He said, yeah, I, I can live with the reduction. But understand that, you know, um, right now, it's, let's clear the streets of the pavement as fast as we possibly can, and barring nothing else, just salt, 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 salt. That's not, let me just finish. That's not what every community does. It's not my job to say that that's right or that's wrong. Um, but, um, as it relates to, it was five-twenty, and, and I'm always very transparent, that if this is something that, um, we've had discussions about, I'll always bring to your attention. So I don't know, Dave, if you wanna just expand on that?
So, um, I've been down at DPW for many years. And before me, the, the standard for the amount of salt we use was seven thousand tons of salt.
A year?
A year. That's contracted with New York State purchasing.
Contract, uh, we're obligated to buy seven thousand tons every year.
It's seven thousand tons for the course of the, the season.
Okay.
Okay? And every year, some years it stays stagnant, other years it's gone up. This year, it went, it went up to how much?
Seventy-five twenty-eight.
Seventy-five twenty a ton.
Wow.
Okay? So, but you get a blacktop policy here in the city.
Right.
Um, some municipalities are dabbing with brine, or use all brine. Some use a combination of brine, salt, sand, whatever it may be. We strictly use salt. Uh, we've, we've dabbled a little bit with brine, we're, we're doing pretreatment of roads with brine. Uh, some routes, we see a difference, others we haven't yet. But salt is our main go-to, and that's always a budget contentious thing that we have, 'cause one of the biggest items in the whole entire budget is salt. And there's no doubt that it keeps going up every year. But with forty-three different nationalities driving out there, some people not knowing how to drive on this type of weather, um, we almost have an idealistic idea like New York State DOT does. Uh, they'd rather put salt down than get million-dollar lawsuits against them. Whether or not we get a million dollars, I don't know, I'm just saying. So it's a, it's a policy that we've, it's an unspoken policy that we have that should be blacktop. It's easier for us, it's a no-brainer, you, you just load it in the truck and you go. Uh, but over the years, been working with Heather to try to reduce some of that. We have, uh, we have somebody in the salt bar now that loads the trucks, and he only loads the trucks with so much salt. Uh, we've, we've been trying to work with the drivers to limit how much they salt. Uh, it's a learning curve. We have a very young driving fleet that have no experience driving plow and salt trucks. So it's getting the senior guys to try to teach them the proper way of salt. So it's always a topic of concern that every budget is salt.
And from the south down, right?
The weather, and it depends on the weather, Austin, uh, obviously too, right?
It does. I mean, regardless of whatever happens, whether it's an inch of snow or ten feet of snow, you, you have to go out and do something with it, because it becomes slick and you don't wanna have accidents all over the place. My phone starts ringing off the hook with nine, nine-one-one calls.
But we're binded to the seven thousand regardless.
Well, it's annually.
It's, every, every year, every spring, New York State Department of Purchasing calls me and says, how much salt does the, the city of Utica want? And historically, seven thousand tons has always been a sweet spot for us to have. Sometimes we stay under.
Yeah, I was just kidding.
Sometimes we go over a little bit, but if we go over, at least we're locked into a certain price.
Seven thousand tons, when we commit to that, we're allowed to buy twenty-five percent up with the same price. If we go lower and we go, let's say, five thousand, if we end up having a really bad winter, you could end up paying double of that a ton.
And you're getting a cheaper rate by buying it.
Right, right. That's why we're committed.
And it's not something that goes bad. If we end up with too much, we don't care.
We, if we have a full barn, that's great. That's a good start to next year.
So, as of right now, we've, we've gone, we've bought seven thousand tons of salt. We started salting in, uh, November of last year, and we salted last Saturday morning. Okay? Uh, we have some snow coming off and on all this week. We'll see where it goes.
Not Saturday, though.
Hopefully not for St. Patty's.
I don't wanna go too late.
Already salted Genesee Street.
But last, last St. Patty's Day, we were out salting and plowing the route, so we could have a parade.
So really basic question, and I apologize if it's like a really naive question. So we're talking about salt salt, like NACL salt. Is calcium chloride just ridiculously expensive? Okay.
It's more expensive.
Much more expensive, although you put it on more thinly, but still, it's much more expensive.
Yeah, it's really good for cold, cold temperatures, on, you know.
And good for your sidewalk, 'cause you're just doing fifty feet, five, four feet.
Right.
Right.
Um, then you can always buy calcium, magnesium, which is for really low, low temperatures, but that, that price is way up there too.
It's really expensive.
Do salt trucks got to stop when they stop spinning, and automatically, you get that little accessory for those trucks?
We do, some of them do, but our nineteen eighty-seven plows that we have out there, they, they don't come equipped with that.
What's the WWD? So, listen, isn't it?
I was eleven years old when they bought those plows.
The only other thing I wanna just mention about this cost center, something changed regulatory this past year, in that, um, you no longer can kinda learn on the job, you CDL, go take the test. You must go to a certified facility. And, um, it's not cheap to go to a certified, certified facility, but we have, we have, the town of New Hartford became a certified facility. And Dave, you have two or three people working with them, right? Working with the town of New Hartford to get certified at a very cheap price. And so we're very fortunate to have that. Otherwise, it would, I don't know, was it like eight thousand dollars a person?
They were three to four thousand dollars of cor, the course.
The course, yeah.
Uh, we also utilize, uh, the town of New Hartford for the brine, too. We have a good working relationship with the Highway Superintendent up there to purchase brine.
The idea of brine is just that it goes farther, right? That it spreads out more thinly and so goes farther than-
It's a pretreatment, but they also use it for when you get ice pack, and the sun's gonna come out, and you go out and spray it, and it goes away. So instead of, instead of, it, it, it just dissipates itself.
Right.
So, but that, they, I don't know that we've done that.
Yes, we have.
I have, okay.
We have. It's, it's very, salt's a no-brainer, okay? You don't have to have a master's degree to learn how to put any of that down. Brine, there's, there's a set standard of how you're supposed to do things. So you have to have one person who knows the ins and outs of brine.
Keeping track of the temperature, keeping track of-
Exactly. There's a whole flow chart, I can show you what you're supposed to use. Salt is simple stupid. You, you go get it, you put it in the truck, and you go and spread it, and you get the same, if not better, results. So it's why brine is, or salt's been always the way to go. Um, you know, different municipalities have different reactions to it.
I can, I can tell you one thing, we're not gonna sand.
Yes.
Way too many catch basins.
But just to, just kinda connect the threads, it, one of the reasons that our, our old green light poles are failing ab, abysmally, is because they're catching all that salt, right? The ones right on Genesee Street, 'cause they're all non-galvanized, they're all too, you know?
Right.
They're all-
That's why they're rusted and drenched.
Softballs everything, even concrete.
Right, right. Um, as we continue on to page fifty-four, demolitions, really nothing, nothing changed here. Our guys do, DPW do an awesome job, um, and they work well with engineering, and it's been a, it's been a partnership. So as it relates to the general fund, that we're, we're kind of done with the list of that. If we wanna move on to page seventy-five, um, we have our sewer expenditure lines. Our salaries, our salaries have, have come down. Um, that's because, um, we were, um, it's just simply the movement of what DPW and how they bid on, bid on the different work. Our big line is line two-eleven on page seventy-five, as it relates to the capital outlay. Um, we're gonna be doing a lot of work again this year. It's not just gonna be, uh, cleaning of catch basins, but we've got some work that's planned throughout the city. But at some point, I mean, debt's up a little bit, which was planned for, um, we will have to raise rates. We haven't raised rates in probably seven or eight years. Um, you know, it, when I first started here five years ago, it was that we have to raise rates or we're gonna go bankrupt. Um, and so we went through and, and we found that we could, we could hold on for a couple of years, but we didn't raise rates in this budget, but we probably will next year.
Can't only raise rates two consecutive years.
I know.
It's all the work they're doing.
And that's part of the mayor's concern. So, so we're cutting it a little close, but we're doing okay.
All right.
And we're also going to see, you know, pick up in usage for the hospital, you know, there. So, um, next year we'll see a little bit more and we'll know kind of annualized what that is. Okay, um, as we, um, move on to... Pardon? Just looking for the number here. Page, uh, um, that's debt service, which we'll talk about next week. Um, 83, 84. Um, as you may recall, and for Mr. Irwin, this might be new, I don't remember if you were here for last year's budget. Um, CDBG, um, at section eight, CDBG, we, we don't, we don't get the, uh, award letter until like August, September?
Uh, well, we just, correct, the award is made in August, September.
Yeah, so we, we get an idea of what we're receiving around now and it's close, a little bit less than last year, but close to the same numbers last year. Um, and then the commissioner and his team, they, they, they do hearings to see how the community wants the money spent. They come up with a budget and because it's grant-driven, it proceeds to E and A for approval. Um, so that's why you don't see numbers in there and, and Brian kind of comes up with an idea of what he wants to spend. Um, as we move on to page 88 and 89, Crystal Curly is here, you may recall, meeting her last year. She had just started last year, um, and has been, I mean, just, you see numbers are, on, on, on page 88, you see what we call our, our, our half income for housing has increased. She's rea- yeah, she's really been working, um, with our federal officials to make sure that, you know, we've seen increases. COVID, you know, kind of experienced that, some of our homeless issues. She's been taking the ball and running with it with Mike Peak and especially Marcus on some of the homeless-related issues that we have here. So kind of expanding the scope of what section eight has been doing.
Right, so as I remember when I asked you last year, Crystal, I said, what sort of determines how much we get? And you said, well, the more that we use successfully, the more they'll give us.
Yes.
So the fact that they're giving us more.
They are giving us more and I'm still awaiting some of the final award letters, but I think we'll probably get an 8% more increase of what's actually listed here.
Which is very significant.
An 8% increase of what is listed here, which is probably going to be around 600,000 more in half than what's actually listed. So the higher performing we are, the more they'll give, the more we're utilizing our vouchers and leasing up people out there. I'm, I'm hoping to see these increases moving forward from on.
I think that's a big success. Thank you, Crystal. I know you've been working really hard on it.
So any other questions in section eight? Uh, real quickly, page 93, page 94, this is URA, good news, bad news?
What page?
Uh, 93, 94. The really bad news, I guess, is that people are paying their property taxes. So that means we're getting less properties back, which to auction, which is great news, but bad news. Bad news.
Microphones are on, careful.
Good news, bad news, but, uh, we have seen, and we saw that in, it started in the middle of COVID. People were just paying their taxes and fantastic, so we're excited by that.
We didn't expect them to.
Yeah, we're excited by that. So seeing a little bit less income, um, but we still have the, you know, some of the same expenses. Um, URA also pays for demolitions if they're in the URA district. So we've seen a couple of demolitions this past year, um, that he's been able to pay for. Um, so the budget is down, um, about $50,000 over last year's budget. And that's just, uh, Brian, um, realizing that revenues are going to be down, trying to live within his budget. Any questions for Brian? On page 97, 98 is our golf, another success story, another success story. Uh, under the, uh, Mike Semenaro and Hank Fergel and Tim Christian, um, up there at the team. Um, we went to, as you may recall, a year ago, year and a half ago, we went to a, a no cash policy up there. And, um, um, it did very successful. Um, and we've seen, just through hard work, um, um, just great things happening up there.
So are there any reports in that terms of that no cash policy? Because I understand the reasoning for it and I think it's good.
Yeah.
But I do worry sort of about the occasional young kid who just wants to show up and play golf and now can't because golf, because cash is all they got.
It won't be the young kids, it'll be the older people.
Oh, okay, okay.
All the young kids, I'll pay with cards.
I'll have cards and phones, yeah.
Yeah. Phone app, yeah.
So is there any evidence that some people are like turned away by the system?
We haven't gotten any complaints.
Okay.
Right, yeah. Um, Hank and, and Mike have worked pretty hard at, at bringing tournaments back, which is very excited about, you know, what's happening at the building at Valley View. Um, and so there's a slight increase in that they've, that their commission recommended in their salaries. Not a lot, I think $4,000 each. Um, um, but Mike, Mike really feels strongly about, um, doing some additional work up there, um, to the, to the grounds. And so he's been looking at that and how to, they're going to have a little bit of a fund balance, which is pretty exciting, which we haven't seen in many, many years, so.
They need a new sign, the Robert Trent Jones golf, I don't know, just a little old, well, faded.
Sorry.
Did they raise the fees at all, you know?
Did they raise the fees?
Just a question.
I don't think so, but I can check into that. I'll check into that for you.
Going back to your comment about cash.
It's pretty affordable now, hopefully we can keep it that way.
The kiosks for the parking garages, we don't take cash. I've had no complaints.
No, okay.
Let's try to card on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and just finally tonight, I did hand out a memo, um, because there were so many questions last week. I, I wasn't prepared to talk about, um, self-insurance that night. I, I have all the information, I just didn't bring it downstairs with me. Uh, but I've had four or five questions that have resounded over and over and over again. Um, and so I tried to put it in the most efficient way I could to answer the questions. But it really comes down to one really big thing. And this is where I think that the misinformation, the miscommunication is. We, we, we increased by 2.2 million dollars for self-insurance. There's a 30% increase from 23 to 24. So if we do nothing else, it's going up at 2.2. If we were to go from at, at, next year, so say in two months from now, we had to go to full insurance, it would go up for another 1.5 to 1.8. If you had 1.8 to 2.2, right, the 2.2 that we've already increased it that's in this budget, and the 1.8 to go to full insurance, that's 4 million. And so when I keep hearing this 4 million number over and over again, I hear 14 million dollars. That's last year's number plus the 4 million. I think things are accidentally being just double counted and that's, and, and so there's only been one or two people that's actually asked me the question and I tried to portray this in this memo as clearly as I could. I had Adirondack Financial Services, who's our healthcare broker, who provides the numbers, review this memo to make sure it was clear. I had our law department review this memo to make sure it was clear. Um, and so if you have any questions, I, please, please let me know. I will share that, um, the, the UFD union president did reach out to me about three weeks ago with two questions. Um, the one question was how much, you know, was our rates going up? And then number two, and I didn't have the answer at that point and I told him I didn't have the answer. If we went to full insurance from self-insurance, what that number would be? I didn't know. I didn't know until last week and I, and I got it in the email form. I had been asking Adirondack for several weeks. And they had to get that information from Exelis, right? Because Exelis would be our carrier and they hadn't physically gotten it. So I'm not quite sure why the confusion. Um, I think everybody is very sensitive to all this and I, I, I just want to make sure that the right information gets out there. I'll be here on Thursday, as we planned, to discuss, uh, benefits, to go through all my spreadsheets. Um, I gave them out last year and I'm happy to give them out again this year and to explain anything. So if you have any questions that's more detailed than that, please reach out to me.
Can I ask you a que- I know that we've been here a long time, but can I ask you one question now?
Sure.
This is a general question I have about self-insurance. So insurance works by putting yourself into a large enough pool so that the risks are spread out thinly enough, a large enough, again, across a large enough group of people, right?
Though that's not why you do it, right? The, the difference between self-insurance and full insurance, it's, it's like your own car. If you had two accidents the past five years, your insurance bill goes up, right? Because they think you're going to have another one next year. It's the same thing i- as it's related to health insurance. They look at your past experience ratings, how many sicknesses do you have? How many claims do you have? Then they project it to the future, okay? And they also have a profit motive. They need to make money. They have to pay administrative costs.
I'm not sure that that was my question.
Okay.
So the difference between full insurance and self-insurance, is the, is the pool of people the same in both instances, all of our employees?
Yes, same.
So it's not the case that with the full insurance, we are part of a larger pool because the other people who Exelis is also insured?
I think you just didn't go far with your analogy. Because you just need to say, because with self-insurance, we're actually paying for what it is. When it's full insurance, you're paying all those extras.
No, I get that. I understand that. Like, you're basically, you're paying to put some money in Exelis's pocket.
Sure.
And I'm certainly happy to keep that money out of Exelis's pocket and keep it in our, say, keep it in our taxpayers' checking accounts. I like that. What I'm, what I'm wondering is, and I think you've answered it, but I'm wondering is, is the pool of insured the same for us under self-insurance?
Yes.
As it was under full insurance?
Yes.
It's the employees we pool. We're not adding our pool to the larger pool.
No.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
It's our pool.
Right, Heather, one thing.
We're not going in with a larger pool and therefore spreading out. It's still always our experience.
I know, I don't know if it was last year or a couple of years ago. We've always come under that number, insurance-wise. Let's say it was 10 million, we only spent 8 million, but we got charged 10 million because that's what Blue Cross charged us. I'm, I'm just throwing that, that number out there.
Yeah, it was.
We were under the number, but we ended up overpaying.
Right, so.
So that's why we tried to go to self-insured.
That's right. So, so 10 years ago, under the prior, um, the prior budget director, when he was with us.
Peter Freyell started absolutely.
Yeah, he came up with a financing plan in that, how do we get enough of a fun, how do we have enough of a fund balance that we could go to self-insurance? Because we have to pay these claims, like within three days when we get them. Exelis pays them for us. We're constantly moving money. Um, and so what, there was a 90-10 plan that, that was developed. And what happened was, is that we would take 90% of the premium Exelis told us and we would pay them. And the other 10%, we would set aside in a bank account, in our bank account. And at the end of the year, it's usually in August, when all the claims have come in, we do a reconciliation. If the claimants came in higher than the 90%, we would take our 10% and pay them. If they came in and it would be no more than that 10%. If, if it came in less, we got to keep the 10%. So over a period of years, this added up and some years we, 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 we had to pay and some years we didn't have to pay anything. And so I want to say, when we went to self-insurance, that was right around $2 million that, that had accumulated there. That's all part of our fund balance. It wasn't segregated on, on our balance sheet. It was never meant to be segregated, that, that number. It was meant, it was meant to help force our fund balance up so that we could go to self-insurance and we could save money. That's what it was meant to be. There was no side agreements. Uh, everybody has, and I wasn't here, you know, I hear all different kinds of ideas as to why that was done. But from everyone I've talked to, from everything I've read, it was really just a way to get, get that cash there so that we could go to self-insurance. And as I've showed in my memo, we save about 700,000 at this point, as of this past year. We, we've saved 700,000 and that's where, when you, we, we went to this plan, we don't have to pay state, the premium taxes. We, we don't have to pay the profit, right, at the moment, to Exelis, wherever that profit might be. In some years, they lose money, so it's not always a, a for-profit. Um, we also get a greater rebate on our high prescription, um, costs. So some of those drugs that you, you see commercials on TV, they give us rebates if our doctors prescribe them instead of doing generics. Um, so we, we get a rebate for those. And those are all out of our hands, but we're seeing an uptick in that too, and that's explained in the memo.
And the reason that we needed that, that say $2 million cushion is that we had to be prepared for the possibility of one of our people, unfortunately being so sick, that they would have very high medical bills and we had to be prepared to pay them because we were self-insured.
That's part of that, but it's also in note in my memo, we get something called a stop loss. And what that means is, with, embedded within our self-insurance plan is a, a much smaller insurance plan, an umbrella for those high claimants.
Anything over a certain amount.
Yeah, anything over a certain amount of money, that insurance kicks in for them. And that cost is about 250 a year, 250,000 dollars a year. Yeah, and I, I want to say we've had one or two high claimants this year. So when it gets to a certain dollar number, it automatically goes to that insurance policy. Um, and so, um, that did go up a little bit this year because we did have a couple of high claimants on it that were laser-focused on. Um, but, you know, I, we can't always predict. And part of this is during COVID, we've seen this go up exponentially and in talking with Adirondack Financial Services, they said they've seen this across the board. They said, we've never seen the city of Utica ever, ever reach the numbers and claimants that, claims that you're receiving right now. But getting back to your question.
And that's a post-COVID thing, we think.
Yeah, yeah. And because a lot of people were not going in for preventatives, right? So we're seeing, you know, much.
We're getting caught up.
Yeah, and but, but the other part to answer your question, as it relates to cash flow. Say in the first part of the year, we have all these high claimants that maybe we don't have in the summer. We have to have that cash to make those payments.
Right.
Where when we are fully insured, it didn't matter. Exelis had the big, of all their clients, right? So they always had cash coming and going. So that's why we had to have cash upfront. There was no way we could save that 700,000 dollars if we didn't have enough cash upfront to be able to make our payments.
So, you know, you were saying that one of the reasons there were such high costs post-COVID was because during COVID, people didn't go to the doctors and then they ended up.
That was part of it. I don't know everything.
Part of it. But then they end up sicker, we all know this, right? If you don't go to the doctor regularly, you end up sicker than you would have been and it's more expensive in the long run, right? Because you don't, you don't get the blood pressure medication, so you have a strip.
You don't, you don't go for your colonoscopies, you don't get your blood work.
Right, right. So is there a way for us to, in some way, incentivize, now that we're insuring them, our employees, to do that preventative care for their own sake, but also for the sake of the taxpayer's bottom line? Can we, something, you know what I mean, like, what can we do to say?
I almost feel like they have in a way, not to interrupt, but I feel like before, you got $2,000 for me, single. It was $2,000 in my HSA. If I didn't use it, it was mine and it just stayed in the account. So naturally, wouldn't you all want to save the money and not use it?
So don't go to the doctor.
Now, it's on a card. If you don't use it, you lose it. So now, if anything, you're more in, I mean, I, I didn't go get blood work done, but now that it's on the card and if I don't use it, I'm like, well, I might as well get blood work because I'm not helping myself down the road.
Right, so we're.
So I think it's almost encouraging.
We were disincentivizing people to get healthcare and now we're not disincentivizing them.
To be specific, but I do feel like, at least from what we have experienced in the transition, it's helped. And even with the small percentage that our union has to pay, with the union's negotiations, the minor amount you pay is covered in your 2% or 3% raise. That, it's still more benefit. We're getting better coverage than we were for a minimal amount, but your salary is increased to cover that expense. So there's no harm to the employee. If anything, I feel like you're more inclined to want to use the money because you're not saving it for later.
Right.
All right, Bobby, last question?
Well, thank you. All right, with this HSA and this spend-out, do we save money with the spend-out?
So what happens is we, for the most part, we all had HSAs before. As, as Stephanie was mentioning, if you were single, you got, quarterly, you got $500 put into a, a checking account and you could pay, that would take care of for your copays or your prescription, extra prescriptions. So three or four years ago, Adirondack Financial Services suggested to us go to an HRA. What that mean, and we chan- actually changed up our healthcare plan a little bit. What that means is you no longer get the $2,000 put in your account that you get to keep forever for any kind of healthcare, uh, expenditure. Instead, you have a swipe card. You have a card that you, that, that pays for those items. And what's not used against that, that $2,000, we get to keep.
City keeps.
The city keeps.
But it's a benefit to the employee because, say, in January, I had an expense, but I was only getting $500 quarterly. If I had a large expense, I had had to pay out of pocket until the next week installment came. So you almost had to get one year health-free to know for a fact your deductible would be covered. Where now, you don't have to worry about it because the card fully covers your deductible. So it, it seems like the transition is a win-win for the employees. Better prescription costs for everyone who's out of pocket. And on top of it, if the employee doesn't use it, the city gets to keep it, so it's a win-win.
$2,000 for the year.
Yes, yes.
In February and it's gone, you, you sure allot that.
And the insurance kicks in.
You don't get the kid back over.
Right.
Might not use it.
But you have now, from a, a city perspective, not as an employee, but from a city perspective, you were spending that $2,000 either way. Now, you have a chance that some healthy people won't have to spend the full 2,000, you know, and then it goes back.
I will say, the, the past three years, the average has been 60%. So we, we expend 60% of that, and that's a big number. It's a big number. And I'll be, explain it to you in person.
And how many employees face, do we, 450, 460?
About that number, yeah, because we also have retirees.
Which is included in that figure.
Yeah, yeah, it might be closer to 550.
Do we have a lot of appeals?
Again, not all city employees are under that plan.
Yeah, they're under Teamsters. The DPW and a couple of management employees are under Teamsters.
Shoot it out there quick there.
If something's not covered in insurance, they can appeal it still, right? If something's not covered in the insurance, they could still appeal it like they would?
Yes, yes.
How's that, do we have a lot of appeals?
We, as it relates to the insurance per se, there's two, there's the insurance and then there's the HRAs.
As it relates to the insurance, we don't even see them. We don't know.
So that company.
That's, Exelis manages that. Um, as it relates to HRAs, they, our employee benefits coordinator, Lori Robel, they reach out to her. I have one, I have one. I mean, and I reach out to her, then they work with Exelis who also, which is Lifetime Benefit Solutions. Um, and sometimes they pay and sometimes not. Often what happens is we have employees that wait a year to turn the bills in. And then it's the last plan year and it's too late.
I motion.
One more time.
Go ahead, Bobby.
I want to thank the employees who we have here. Because in the private market, it, it has worked in the private market, but you pay with the. Much harder than, and, and I don't really, I don't think those people realize what we get for our dollar. And I want to thank each and every person, their work for the city. I know the difference, I'm not too sure, but we just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close budget meeting. Motion. Thank you, guys.